The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
It is seven o'clock. I would like to call this special town council meeting, the first one of this session, to order on January 18th, 2022. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, can you lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item C, public comment. We will first open the floor to anyone here with us in the audience who would like to speak. If you do, please stand up, state your name and address, and try and limit your comments to five minutes. Seeing none here in the audience, do we have any public comment online?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, seeing no hands raised, we will move on to item D, consideration of special topics. Number one.
Agenda item D1, like to make a motion to establish a town council ad hoc committee to work with town staff to make recommendations to the town council on the next steps concerned in the 1928 building. The ad hoc committee will make the recommendations on the following, and that's items listed one through six as shown on the paper. And we'd like to also appoint council members Johnny Carrier and Ed Gennaros to that ad hoc committee.
Second? We have a motion in a second. Kathy McDonald?
Yes. I thought we could maybe go through each one of these items and have a discussion about it. So, as we talked about at the last meeting last week, this would be an ad hoc committee that would work with various town staff members. And if we go to the first item, is that we would work with the Farmington High School Committee to prepare the following timelines. A is when a final decision of the status of the building needs to be made. And two, based on that decision, a timeline to a referendum or to the demolition of the building, depending on what comes out. I think we need to really know what our timelines are. The second thing would be to engage stakeholders and conduct a needs assessment on space needs in town, including approximate square footage requirements. Again, how big is the 1928 building? How much space is there? You know, just a general needs assessment about what could potentially go in that building. And that would be with various stakeholders. Three, we provide, this committee would provide high level recommendations if the 1928 building could be used to satisfy those needs. I think it should be noted that my intent in this would be a broad overview of the town space needs, and if they can be satisfied by the 1928 building. A future building committee would be charged with a deeper dive into the specifics, including cost and a design. This is kind of just a broad view. Four, public opinion is obviously important to this process. The ad hoc committee will determine if a public opinion survey is warranted at this stage, or if it would be more appropriate for a future building committee to solicit that input. So, again, I think I left that open-ended. As I discussed at the last meeting, there was, there's a survey option. You know, there's other ways of public com, I mean, public opinion. I mean, obviously, the building committee would have to get buy-in and have a lot of public opinion about this. But I just, going back to number one with the timeline, I'm just not sure how long we have to make these decisions. And then, so, that's why I've kind of, was just not too sure about that. So, that's why I put that as more of a general question. Number five, provide any other recommendations to the committee that is determined important based on the findings. And six, report back to the council on their findings. If the town council recommends a renovation, it's anticipated that part two of the ad hoc committee's charge will be to create a statement of needs for the renovation of a public building. As many of you know, you need a statement of needs to create a building committee. And I figure that this committee could be the start to after, if the council says yes, I think we do want to move forward. Can you create a statement of needs? And I think that should be relatively simple based on the information that we receive based on one through six or one through five. And that's kind of my starting point of what we talked about a little bit last time. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Why don't I open it up for questions from the council here? Brian?
Yeah, one question I have is, I like that we're doing the potential, there's going to do a survey, but where is the public input? We had talked about having a, a public input meeting at some point, and I don't see that reflected here. I thought it was there earlier.
I wrote here, public opinion is important to the process. The ad hoc committee will determine if a public survey, or public, I mean, or public input. Could you add that in?
Okay, yeah, I didn't see the, because we do need to have that public meeting, so we should, it shouldn't be an option. I think we should definitely have that opportunity for the public to come and speak to the, to the committee.
Yeah, and this, Brian, this ad hoc committee is really to determine what the parameters and what should be done by the next committee. And that will be the one you're talking about, I think, with the public coming to that committee.
So, we're not going to really?
In this one, on the ad hoc, this is more of the, the 10,000-foot view of it, to figure out what that next committee will be addressing, and how it will be addressed, and how we can get the public's best input.
Okay. So, how, if the public did want to speak to that, do they speak to that committee at all? Or what is the vehicle for that?
The meetings would be public meetings of the ad hoc committee. They have public meetings, and they could come to that meeting. Again, I think that, again, I agree that there definitely needs public input on this and public comment. And again, whether, you know, at this level, but I kind of try to think of this ad hoc committee and how I set them up, is almost like more of like staff work. You know, it's like staff work. Like, we're trying to work together. And again, I'm working with the council and my staff instead of like, you know, going through some of the nitty-gritty to try to come up with things. These meetings would be public, and so that people could listen in and participate. But the intent, usually with these ad hoc committees, is just to kind of have like staff working. And one of the things could be very much that this committee could come up with, is coming back to the council and saying, listen, I think before anything happens, you guys need to have public input on this before you even move forward. You know what I'm saying? This ad hoc committee, that could be one of the things that they say is, listen, I get that this is a staff thing, these are the things, but I think you're missing this component. Now, the other side could be, well, understand that we need to, the high school building committee may say, listen, we need a decision by, you know, X, Y, and Z. It may be faster to say, listen, let's do a, a statement of needs, get a building committee. And the first thing that the building committee does is get as much public input as possible. So, again, I, I think that it's important, but also that my vision of an ad hoc committee is more like a staffing workshop type of thing to kind of get the nuts and bolts of what the policy decision, so that when we come here to the council, that there's consensus to move forward, and that we don't then come to the council, and then we have to go four more months because no one agrees.
I'm just concerned that we may hear from the public, they may be upset that they may not be included in that somehow. But I'm glad that we have the option for at least a survey.
And one of the keys here, Brian, is if we have this decided, for instance, the public has no clue as to what the space needs are for the town. The public won't be able to tell us what the building committee's timeline are. A lot of the items on this high-level view are not things that the public is going to be even having knowledge of. So, we want to make sure we set this up so we can not just get all the proper information out to the public. When they're engaged, we can get their full engagement. But we also need to work regardless of what this timeframe is that the building committee says on a fairly tight timeline, because this is something that has to be decided clearly long before any building come down. So, we want to make sure we move it well, efficiently at the very beginning, so when the public is involved, their public has much more value. So, but I appreciate the thought. Ed, you had a thought?
Yeah, I did. Thanks. Yeah, I definitely agree with Brian. I think, and I think Kathy recognized this too, that public opinion is going to be very important for this overall process. I think we're going to have a lot of different opinions, and we want to hear that and digest that as, as we're going through this, this process here of looking at 1928 building. One question on number three, where we're kind of calling this a high-level recommendation. So, is that language kind of leaving, leaving it open enough that if, let's say the, let's say it goes to, after this committee, it goes to a building committee. And the building committee comes up with another idea that's maybe like a hybrid of what this committee comes up with, with the town's space needs, and maybe some sort of mixed use where part of the building is for some, you know, some other potential use, and part of the building is satisfying town needs. Would this be, is this flex, is this language flexible enough that we'd be able to, the town council, they could come back to the town council and present some, some sort of idea like that to us?
Right. I think that this committee would present that, because the committee, the regular building committee would have a charge. And this committee could recommend to the building committee that that charge, that they look at hybrids of various things, you know, after we, absolutely. But I think that it would be this committee's idea eventually to come up with the charge and the statement of needs to the council. And so, you could charge the next building committee on anything the council really wants. And I think that's what this group would talk about.
Okay. So, yeah, and then I think what you're saying is the scope is not, not just narrow to just the, you know, office space needs of town.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm trying for in number two, is again, space needs in the town. I guess I'm looking more, you know, town could be more broad, you know, not just municipal town, you know, community needs, various things, you know, creative things. Like, once we go through what the space needs are, I think this group is going to kind of vet some of the things that you just talked about. And then, when they come up with a charge, that could be in the charge of the bigger committee.
And don't forget, when this committee comes to this council recommending a charge, it is just that, it's a recommendation. We could still change or adjust or modify that charge however we see fit as a full council.
Right.
Keith?
No questions.
Okay. Joe?
I'm good.
Raffin?
How's that?
Tony?
Good.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing out. Next item.
Okay. Agenda item D2, like to make a motion to adopt the 2022 through 2024 Town of Farmington Strategic Plan Town Manager Goals.
Second? We have a motion in a second. Kathy?
Okay. What I thought I would do is, and I think Kat, it'll show up on their screen too, correct?
Uh, no, because they're not logged into this.
Oh, okay. So, we'll go through, it's, it's, it's here, but on the big screen, I'm kind of trying to make it not as busy for everyone. And so, we'll go through it. And and Kat, just to bear with me, with all this new technology, I'm not sure how everything works. Can I get that on my screen?
There you go. It should be there now.
And where would it be?
You can't, because I have to control it. But you have zoom up on yours, so you should be able to see it reflected on yours.
Okay, got it. Okay. All right. So, if we start on page one, just wanted to go over, first of all, CJ, you and I spoke offline, and I just want to make sure that, we thought that we'd go through all the goals first, and then come back, and I'd just do high level on each one of them. And then, we'd come back and ask questions and go through them in detail. Is that?
So, for clarification, Kathy's going to go through the entire strategic plan. She's going to give her high-level descriptions. Then, we're going to go back and have discussions after that.
All right. So, on the first is our, our key. And just to let you know, we do it as a red, yellow, and green. And it's just timeframe, cost, complexity, and workload. And we're just trying to, you know, give a broad brush on some of these goals and objectives. One thing that I wanted to make sure everyone understands about is that cost can be, is twofold, is that cost of studying it may be limited. It's low to study it, but it could be expensive to implement it. So, studying something, I may write that the cost is low. But in reality, if you actually did the goal, it could be very costly. So, again, I'm just putting the cost, the immediate cost. So, just so there's clarity on that. All right, Kat, page, next page. All right. So, the first, the first goal that we had was our ad hoc for our Parsons Committee. That goal has been completed, and they have disbanded the committee. I think we need another goal on that, and it would be to establish and charge a new committee. Basically, most of that is going to be red. And so, it's, it's complex, it costs money, it's going to have a lot of staff time, and a lot of town council time. So, that's what that one is. Next page, Kat. The next one is to review the affordable housing. That was an existing goal. And that was complete. Now, it's the implementation of it. I suggest that we move the implementation of that goal into the town planners' goals. The town council has approved the affordable housing goals, the TPZ has, and now we are implementing them. And I think that that should go into the town planners' goals. Next goal. The next one is our goal is, this is our traffic goal, I call it, with the state. So, it's to manage traffic problems with the state of Connecticut, and then report back to the town council. The first item is in black, 51-260, and that is to conduct and review the options for a post-construction traffic study. The council members that were on the past council know that that has been an existing goal. We had pushed that out because of the fact that our, because of COVID, we really weren't going to get an accurate traffic study, because the traffic was not anywhere near what it normally is. I suggest that we still keep that as a goal, and that's something that I would call maybe the new normal for traffic, and that we do conduct a traffic study on Route 4. The one that's in red is been complete. And then, the three new bullet points are the projects that we're working on right now with the state of Connecticut, it's around about on South Road and Two Mile Road and Colt Highway. It's our LoSOP grant for repaving of Brickyard Road. And the last one is, that's our third bridge, and that has been moving along quite a bit. The next milestone on that is finalizing the CROD DOT connectivity study, which we've been working on for the past year. And that is coming to a finalization, which is really good news. This goal is for staff time, it's red, council, I would say, low, and the rest of it is relatively green. Next item, Kat. This would be goal three. This is the bike committee. One of the things that last year we had for the bike committee, typically, we've had the goal that just said, provide needed support to the bicycle committee. We've asked the bicycle committee to start establishing goals on a yearly basis, and then coming, and then acting on those goals. So, they now have that. And so, now, they don't have to really develop new goals and within conjunction. That's part of their plan. So, it'd be really just staffing the bike committee. This is a pretty green for staff and town council. The next goal is goal four, and that goal is an existing goal from the plan that we are, the 2020-22 plan. This is a goal that I've been recommending. Unfortunately, it's very complex. There's a lot of staff time, it's a lot of council time. But I think it's an important goal. And what that is, is to establish an ad hoc committee to work with the town staff on Chapter 169, Streets and Sidewalks. This is to make recommendations. Our ordinance on streets and sidewalks is something that we, I feel that the council really needs to look at, if we're going to make any changes to it, how we treat sidewalks, what we do. And this is, sidewalks is not an easy topic, but I think we need to really start looking at this ordinance and deciding if we need any updates to it, because we're not following what the ordinance says. The next item, next page, is a new goal, and this is in the public works area. And that would be to manage and complete the Main Street Route 10 sidewalk project. So, I put that as a goal that will be a high end on the staff for time, but that's coming. So, I think that's something that we need a goal for that. The next goal is, number six was crossed out. That was the wastewater treatment plant. We finally have finished the upgrades of the treatment plant, and also our payments. So, that is complete. And I'm adding a new goal, six, which is not, it's new number, but we've had the goal. It's the high school project. And this is, again, as you all know, even though it's wonderful that we passed the referendum, now we have to implement it. And it's a lot of staff time and design, and making sure that we are good stewards of the taxpayer money. And so, that's number six. Number seven. Number seven was, our goal was to approve the fire department's statement of need and establish a fire station committee. I guess to be technical, we haven't established the committee yet, but we did approve the statement of needs. What this is next is that, moving to the next stage, is that having that building committee and staffing the building committee. This would be high on the staff and high on the town council for time and costly. The next item is number eight. This is a new goal. This is provide the needed support to ensure the 1928 ad hoc committee, what we just talked about. So, this is, again, it would be, I would envision that this would be the ad hoc committee. And then, if potentially, it would be, this goal would change, and it would turn into a building committee if that's what is the council decides to do. Number nine is, we're deleting that, that, well, no, I'm sorry, it's deleted off the plan. This is our cemetery committee. I suggest that this moves to the town planners' goals. It's something that we still need to investigate. And now that our planning department is going to be fully staffed, I think that's something that they can take on and try to work with the state of Connecticut on some of the different things that go along with the cemetery, and try to work with the cemetery committee. As many of you know, we've been involved in this. It's not easy. We are having, we're struggling to find land that would be suitable for the cemetery, a new, you know, a new cemetery. Number nine is an existing goal. That's our land acquisition committee. So, that would be, again, a committee and staffing that land acquisition committee. The next goal, 10, would be, that would be with UConn, having a, we had a small committee that used to meet with UConn. We did that mainly when there was the huge, the big expansion that was taking place there. I think that this is something we'd still be meeting with UConn, but I think it could move to the economic development goals. The next one was an existing goal that we didn't get to over the last two years, and that would be a town council ad hoc committee to work with town staff to explore various quality of life, enhances a sense of place for the millennials. The next one is a number 11, and that's an existing goal, and that's, can't read it. It's to talk about that the Economic Development Director works with regional and state economic development activities. That's a standing goal that Rose Ponti does, and the council gets a report on it. The next goal is number 12. That goal is about the Farmington Trails Council Business Community to enhance the trails experience and support local businesses. I'm, this goal, they've been working on, and I would say that this would be incorporated in the bicycle committee goals. So, we're not getting rid of it. It would just be one of their specific goals. And that was on page six before. And Kat, I don't think we need to go back for it, but it was in the bike committee. Number 13 is, we would move that, continue to use Explore Farmington to increase engagement with the town residents and local businesses. I would move this to the economic development goals. If you remember, this was a goal two years ago, is because we did a very, very big push to enhance the site and made substantial changes to it. We'd always be doing that, but I think that could be an economic development goal. I don't think it needs to be in the town council in my goals. 12 is an existing goal. It's our budget goal. So, we just changed the date for 2223 to do the annual town budget. 13 is, this is to create an ad hoc committee to recommend a policy, working with the school system on the deferred defined benefit contribution plan. I think we found a solution for that, and we've put it on the front page of the town budget. I don't think that we need to have an ad hoc committee at this time, and we can continue with our current policy. It seems to be working out okay. 14 is a new goal. It's a new goal for the plan, but we have created an ad hoc committee, not an ad hoc, yeah, it's the ad hoc committee. It's for the ARPA monies. So, this would be that committee, the stimulus funds from the state, I mean, from the federal government. The next goal was an existing goal, which was complete, and that was updating our property tax relief ordinance. So, that was completed. The next goal is an existing goal, and that's with meeting with our state delegation on a yearly basis. And they're coming next month. Number 15 is just my standard goal, that it's my day-to-day operations of managing the Town of Farmington. Number 16 is that I provide a yearly report to the town council on the goals and objectives. Number 17 was an ad hoc committee that, like, two years ago, we went out for a bid for legal services. So, that was complete. And on new goal on 17 is that I think we need a goal about managing and monitoring all COVID-19-related activities. Unfortunately, COVID has now been going on for quite some time. I think it needs to be in the goals, because it does take a substantial amount of time. 5.2 in number 18. This is just part of my job, is obviously to provide the town council with technical information, policy recommendation, and legislative advice at each town council meeting. 19 is our racial equality task force. So, that's an existing goal, and so, I would continue to have that as part of our strategic plan. Number 20 is, again, an existing goal, and that's our Green Efforts Committee. 21 is a new goal, is to oversee the completion of, completion of a renovated new skateboard park, which we've been moving along for. And then, goal 21, I'm sorry, Kat, I missed that. That was our comprehensive 10-year facility program at Tunxus Mead. That was completed. And one of the aspects of the 10-year plan facility improvement was a new skateboard park. So, the council last year funded the new skateboard park, and we're moving towards completion of that. 22, that is the Trails Council. That is delete, because it's been completed. I think the only thing that we're still working on, and I think that would go in, again, the bike committee's goals, is the water fountain. I think we still need to do the water fountain. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. So, what I'd like to do is go back through at a slightly slower pace, so we can have some discussions. And if anyone has, as we're going through the different items, anywhere they need to add, comment on stop, we'll do that as well. So, we'll start with goal two, transportation and land. And as you see, the, under the goal two, we had a 2.2, establishing a new charge for the committee. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. 2 point, let's see, then we go on to our state projects. We've got the roundabout, the Brickyard Road paving, and the additional river crossing, which is moving forward. Any questions or comments on that one? Regina?
Yeah. So, would this be the committee, or whomever does the interface with the state? Maybe two months ago, there was an accident off of Route 6, and it effectively closed that. So, we were all redirected through Mountain Road and then through Farmington on Route 4. And it just made it apparent, like, if any time there was a thoroughfare or an accident, or if there was like a weather-related closure or something like that, we would effectively be closed as a town, because there's no way to enter or exit, because those two arteries are blocked. So, I would just recommend whoever we talk to, like, are there any other, I know we're thinking about a third bridge, but are there any other mitigation strategies that we can put into place in the next year, two years, to kind of maybe take care of some of those potential issues? I know that we can't widen the road because it's a state road, and Route 4 is kind of effectively done in terms of construction. But what are the other things? Are there any other options that we could look at in terms of traffic and in terms of getting people through?
Kathy, any other areas that we've done other than what we've been doing with traffic lights, things like that, and redirecting? I think this is, this is the big one. And part of the problem is, you know, short of making new roads, we've been dealing with the roads that we have. This would be actually adding a road to try and mitigate that. But is there's anything that we've been doing other than that, Kathy?
You know, one of the things that you stated is, I think, we've You know, one of the things that you stated is, I think, we've come to, you know, conclusions a lot, you know, throughout time, is that with the river going through the town, it's really difficult. But that said, that's one of the things that we think the reason why we have a very strong potential grant application, because even when you're saying about, you know, a car accident, when we've had some really significant weather issues, how to get in and out of town, and we, we've learned quite, it's been sometimes very scary with the river that you can't, you're basically locked into town, and we're hoping that part of the grant funding to have a third bridge will be coming from emergency management and the federal government. And so one of the things that that's part of the funding source. We, again, we've looked at different things about trying to, you know, alleviate some of the traffic. I'm not sure there's anything else really that we can do. I mean, I think there's more about working with the state on the timing of the lights on Route 4. We still have quite a bit of problems with the timing of the lights that even with all the technology the state of Connecticut has, the lights get off quite a bit, and that causes significant backup all over the place because of that. So I think something like that is to work on that end of it. We've done significant changes in Unionville that I think has really helped Unionville traffic. We could have done more, but the, the community really didn't support that. There was a lot of talk about widening the Unionville Bridge and doing that, but really we didn't get support for it. So I honestly, I think the best avenue is really to push very hard, and we have gotten quite a bit regionally about this third bridge, and people have always kind of talked about it in the distant future. Honestly, I think that this third bridge and the movement of it is moving quite a bit, and I think that if we're going to spend our time trying to work with the state and do that, I think focusing our attention to keep this project moving as fast as possible is, I think, is our best course of action, and I know that doesn't really help on some of the issues. I just don't, I don't know another answer to fix the overall kind of traffic.
So I know we all talk about the third bridge, so just for clarification, for the minutes and for everybody who may be paying attention at home or not, where does the third bridge begin and where does it go to?
Okay. I think, Kat, do we have Russ Arnold on the line?
We do. Let me enable his microphone.
Russ, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes.
All right.
Hi, Russ, did you hear the question?
There was some discussion about the third bridge?
And Rafina asked if we could, just for the minutes and just for clarification, where the Town Council has approved and where we're working, where the third bridge would be, where would it start, and where would it end?
It's going to be right at Monty Drive across, when you come out of the, you know, the Town Hall campus, you would go straight across the bridge onto New Britain Avenue.
And it would drop off near the Senior Center, right?
Right next door, yep.
Next door. And we have a plan, I think, that I can give you a copy of, and maybe we could put it on the webpage too, just so people could see it. But one of the things, Russ, is, the thought is, is that they would have, from the Senior Center and the Police Department, they would put a walking trail down by the river, and then the bridge would be over, and there would be walking, right, walking trails over the bridge, right, Russ? And that would connect that, that campus, the Police and Community Center, to our campus over here at the Town Hall. And so the whole idea is that it would come out over at that side. Years and years ago, they had a bigger bridge. Russ, where did that go? That was at Brickyard, right?
That was at the end of Brickyard, and it crossed the river where they do the crew program, and it's the widest point in the river, and it had the biggest environmental impact.
Right.
Where this location is, it's the narrowest point of the river, very little environmental impact. There's nothing in the river, nothing in the waterway. It spans the bridge, it spans the river. And the one good thing about this is, I know there's, you know, everyone talks about all the traffic, the traffic, got to improve the traffic. We've done probably, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of about $50 million worth of traffic, traffic projects, yeah, maybe even 60, over the last 15 years with the DOT to improve traffic throughout town. And that includes the Bridge and Farmington Center, Route 4, Unionville Center, projects on Route 6, street traffic signals. So to me, we've done pretty much everything we can do in town except for this bridge. And this bridge will remove traffic from both centers, which will alleviate those corridors, thus providing people a quicker way in and out of town to get through town.
Right, but Russ, you're saying that it's coming from Monty, right, to go over to Route 6, right, from Farmington here, right, right here at the end?
No, you're going to hit New Britain Avenue. It's nowhere near Route 6. You're going to get onto New Britain Avenue down by Oak Ridge and by the, right, as Kathy said, just to the west of, or south of, Police Station and Senior Center.
But that's in the middle, middle of town, so the pinch point from where I live, on the other end of town, like by East Farms where Brian lives, right, will that take care of that pinch point as well? Like, how does it, I'm sure that there have been-
I guess I'm, I'm not following what pinch point you're at, because this will remove, by putting this bridge in, it'll remove traffic from the Route 10 corridor and the Route 177 corridor, as well as the Route 4 corridor.
Okay, so if you're coming-
So what, I'm just, I'm not sure what pinch point you're talking about on the east end of town.
So if you're coming from West Hartford, for example, and you're on 84, and you're coming down-
Yeah.
-to Route 4 to get to Monty Drive, for example.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, understood.
That routinely backs up, and it's cyclical, like, you know, during the summer, sometimes it just backs up for whatever reason.
Right.
Like, you can never really time it, like, you know, you'll be there on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon, and all of a sudden you're like, wait a second, why is there traffic? And I don't know why that is, but it just seems like, for whatever reason, that's always, not always, sometimes jammed for, you know, a couple of weeks, and then it clears up, and then for whatever reason, it gets jammed again. So that's the, the pinch point that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Got you, got you. I didn't understand it first, and I apologize.
Russ, maybe explain, Russ, maybe explain how that's, that, how the bridge is going to alleviate, because that's what we're considering, the center traffic, that center and then the other center.
Right, that's what I just said.
Yeah.
It's going to pull traffic out of the route. By tape, by having the bridge and getting a bridge put in, it's going to, instead of traffic leaving the high school and going through both Farmington Center, Route 10, Garden Street, Route 4, and Unionville Center with Route 4 and 177, a lot of the traffic has got to cross the bridge and get onto New Britain Avenue and go to Oak Ridge, go to the Mead, and avoid, excuse me, avoid those centers, thus opening up the centers to allow more traffic to pass through at a higher rate.
Right.
Maybe, if I could jump in, maybe I think you're talking about is the light situation at the pinch point from Route 4 to basically Brickyard, I think comes down from the redesign of Route 4 by Parsons. And then like Kathy was saying, we had the traffic issues with the timing of the lights, and that's something that they have been continuously working on to try to get the timing better, so as you come off 84 West on the 4 West, it flows a little bit more easier instead of bogging down by the Hillstead, bogging down again at Parsons, and then, you know, going over the bridge and get it in, trying to get into-
Right.
Okay.
Excuse me, I think that's something, Joe, that we can continue to work with the DOT to monitor the timing of the traffic signals. But Rafina, as you said, you don't know if it's going to back up at 1 o'clock or 3 o'clock.
Yeah, it's very strange.
And it could be, yeah, it's very, it's different, and it's one of the, one of the puzzling things that even, you know, for doing traffic for so long, just, there's no rhyme or reason for it. Typically, traffic, people are creatures of habit, and you'll know when the AMP goes, you know, when the PM goes. This, there's no standard to it. So it's, it's just, unfortunately, it's here in Farmington, and it's an anomaly. But I think by continuing to work with the DOT to monitor the traffic, like, the traffic signals and their timing, is one of the best ways that we can do it. We had it going for a while where there was very little backup, and then it gets tweaked or something happens, and it's, excuse me, it's a very tedious process. Not that that is an excuse, but you just can't go in and say, okay, I'm going to add 15 more seconds of green time on Route 4 Westbound.
Right.
It just doesn't work that way. You have to let, figure out what the best timing solution is for all directions.
Right, and one of the things that they're doing, Rafina, and I understand your point that, because it's hard to really visualize why that bridge was going to help that area of town, is that part of this huge study and that they've been doing and working on, they've been doing this comprehensive study of all the traffic and all the different things, and trying to see how many cars are getting, will be pulled out, and how many cars are regional cars, all sorts of different things that this big comprehensive study is doing, and that's why it's taking quite a bit of time. But it's, this project has been getting quite a bit of legs at, at the state level and, and at the region, because really it's just not us with Farmington that has the traffic, it's obviously with the region, with Burlington and everything. And then you add in, again, the emergency aspect of it, and that, you know, we had a tree go down in the middle of Route 4, and, you know, it was, it was gridlocked for, you know, hours and hours, and people couldn't get through, and there's just not a lot of alternate ways to get to one end of the town to the other. And so I think that the bridge and working with this, and also looking to try to really go back with the state and look at these lights again, we, we've been working with Ms. Porter's, because on Route 10, they've been having a trouble with the, the bar, whatever, the, the crosswalk bar, and some different things with the state to kind of have them come out again and look at the whole lighting system for us, because it's definitely not working the way it should be working. And so there's, there's a lot of different avenues that we're trying to go with.
And what's the timeline for getting the bridge? I know you said that there's been some progress, but is there?
Russ, what's the, what's the, what's the implementation for your plan, and then what's the kind of the next steps? Nothing moves that quickly, unfortunately, but.
So the study is supposed to be wrapped up in April, May. I think it's going to be sooner than that. They'll be coming to the council with the presentation of the study, excuse me. So that's the connectivity study, and I think from there, we're going to be able to, having that study completed and accepted by both the Town, CROG, and the DOT is going to be the catalyst to get the funding. And with all the money that we're, we're getting through the federal government, I think this is a very prime candidate to get funded.
Okay. Well, will this be part of the ARPA funding, or this is separate, like DOT state funding that we'll be getting for the-
Separate funding, separate funding.
Okay. Thank you, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Just to, you know, Rafina, to your point, when we do, and back in 2011, when we had floods, blizzards, everything else, at one point, the high school and where we are right now was basically an island, because of the flooding cut off Route 4 at two sides. There was another point where the water was rising in the river and was threatening to go over the deck on the Unionville Bridge, at which point that would have been shut off totally, and you had to circle around the entire end of town. These are all the issues that we're looking at, and I think when Russ talks about the regionalization study, showing how important that artery is not just to us, but all those people we know that passed through our town getting somewhere else. So that's critical, and if this study comes through the way we expect it will, and proves how important this is regionally, that takes us to the next step and opens up the door to substantial amounts of money so we can get the, we can move forward on this. And it can be something we do actually see in our lifetime, and it's not something that's that future, one-day mysterious third bridge. This is a reality now, and as was pointed out, all the money that's been coming in from the federal government, and we're looking at more money potentially they're going to be sending out, this seems to be custom-made for that type of project. So hopefully, while we're still sitting here, as Russ said, if in April or May they're coming back to us and we can approve those studies, we start moving forward on it. And that's, I think that's going to be huge. Just one other thing, talking about the traffic at either end, whether you're talking about getting off 84 or coming in from Unionville, you have to remember, it's, it's almost like a straw, and in the middle of the straw, you've got all the things coming in from the, the high school, the Town Hall, everything else that's feeding going back in both directions. So everyone leaving the high school is affecting getting off 84 and vice versa. So if instead of going one way or the other on Route 4, you're crossing the river immediately, you're thinning out, I guess it's better, you think about your arteries, you don't have a clot in the middle of that artery, you're thinning, you're clearing the clot, so the flow from either end should be enhanced significantly. So, anyway. The other item on here that I didn't bring up, and Kathy alluded to, was just the study of the traffic lights and getting those lights all synchronized properly. So, any other questions on this?
Yeah, I guess kind of in this, going back to kind of how we're talking about, there's, you know, regional needs with traffic and, you know, the state looking at what to prior, excuse me, what to prioritize. The post-construction traffic study for Route 4, I know this is something we've been wanting to do for a while, and we've kind of been waiting for the traffic to normalize. I'm not sure if it's ever going to get quite back to exactly what it was when we, when we first kind of thought of what that definition of normalize is, but I guess where, where are we now with, like?
I think, yeah, what I stated just a little bit, I think that we're ready to try, because I said that, you know, basically, I don't, we're going to have a new normal. I think, I think what we're aiming for is sometime, hopefully, we're going to try to get through this little wave of, what we wanted to somewhat wait for is to kind of see that Hartford would be opening up again, you know, and then how many people would be going back to work, so that would help us out a little bit. I think that we're looking to, that in the next couple of months to try to do another study. I mean, everyone, I think that the study's just going to codify what we know, but it will be interesting to see, because we are part of the bridge study. They've done some traffic numbers because of the bridge study, the third bridge study. So I think between that and then a Route 4 and kind of the area around that, we've, we have some data from, I don't know, it was a few years ago where we did data, not just on Route 4, but we did the different Garden Street and some different things all around it. So it would be nice to compare some of that and have some, we have a benchmark to see where we were. So I think, long story, I think in the next couple of months, we're looking to try to implement that.
That sounds good, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think it absolutely helps when we have that quantitative data, when we go to talk with the state rather than-
Right.
-trying to talk in abstract, and this is what people are experiencing, this is kind of what people are saying, rather than this is what the data shows.
Right. And, and again, I don't think that the state has ever denied that there's traffic issues. It's, we have basically, like, when we did the Route 4 project, as you know, that the community basically decided to do, you know, 75%. They didn't do 100%, and that's why still coming into town is, is a problem. So again, I think there was some thought that we do that study, and maybe in the future, could we tweak some of the turn lanes and do some other things that would help the situation? But again, unless something has totally changed, we can't widen it because there's, we can widen it, but you're, you have historic buildings on one side, you have other things on the other side, the character of the community, but I think a, a study will help us and also to see if we can tweak, if there's something we can do with the changing lanes and some different things like that.
And one more quick question. On the Brickyard Road Pavement Rehabilitation Phase 2-
Yep.
-so will that take the pavement all the way to the town line with, with Avon?
I think so. Russ, is that, it's going to Avon, right?
Right, unmuted?
Yeah, you're unmuted.
Good.
Yeah, yes, that's going to take the project from Wildwood to the Avon Town Line.
Great.
And if I could, just talk about that, the traffic study, just so that everyone's on the same page and what the expectations are. The traffic study that we did prior to 51260 starting, and what this traffic study that you're talking about was going to compare the two, you know, pre and post-construction. What, by doing the study now, with being in COVID, you're not going to really get the same data. You're going to have data, but you're not going to be able to compare it pre and post to see what improvements were done because of the traffic not being, you know, pre-COVID normal condition. So it'll be a study that you're going to get traffic for our new normal, but unfortunately, it's not going to be able to be used to compare what the improvements really did, what Route 4 really did, because we're not back to that point in time.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, Russ, because part of it was, is that we wanted to do the study to show how much improvement was actually made, and people, again, you forget sometimes about coming out, going out of town, so I think your point is well taken, that we may not see how much of an improvement it actually made because the traffic's not the same as it was pre-COVID. But I think that we, you know, again, there's never, we can benchmark, and maybe at another time, we could do another study too. I mean, it's, it's not going away, so.
Right, but this study could potentially still show that coming into town is still a problem.
Yes.
It just won't show-
Oh, yeah, it'll show that.
The full improvement of going out of town.
Right. Exactly, exactly.
Right, exactly, exactly. And the one thing with the bridge, as CJ was talking about, how we're, you know, the Town Hall was an island, the one good thing, by getting this third bridge in, the Unionville Bridge- Bridge, the, the trust bridge is going to need to be worked on significantly and/or replaced. And by having this third structure in north, south crossing, it'll reduce a huge bypass and keep traffic flowing through Unionville when that project has to come. So just another benefit to having this new structure.
Can I jump in on one thing?
Go ahead, Joe.
Russ, since you mentioned the Unionville Bridge, and what's the timeline on that for the state to finish their work there?
I don't have a crystal ball for that. But it'll be done this, this summer.
Thank you.
They ran into some design issues with the existing steel and they finally got that all redesigned and they'll be coming out in the spring and getting going and should, it'll be done during the summer, this upcoming season.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on 2.3? All right, moving on to 2.4. That's just the, well, we've got our bicycle advisory committee. And the bicycle committee has been working on their, their different targets for the year. We will get them in, we'll get them in by the next meeting, I think.
One of the things CJ, I was wondering if you think, because you're on that, had been on that committee, is that I was thinking that a name change may be appropriate for the bicycle advisory committee and calling it maybe the Bicycle and Trail Advisory Committee? Because I do think that we look to this group to help us with some of the trails and some of the things that go on along with that. I think it would be, maybe it's just, you know, and change the name.
Yeah, and I think you'd mentioned that and later in the papers here, we'll find some of the goals that you were talking about moving to it, which are more trail related. It's, and bicycle committees statewide have actually started to go in that direction and what they're calling them bike ped or walking or transport or something, they're trying to be more inclusive because a lot of the benefits that you're creating for the bike community is also for the walking, the running, the, whatever else you're moving along on those trails with. So yeah, I think that's very reasonable. We can look into that too. To manage and complete the main street sidewalk project.
Forgot number four.
Oh, sorry. Number, yeah, that's, I was just trying to skip right over that. Number four, much bigger topic. Looking at chapter 169, Streets and Sidewalks, this is making recommendations on any updates, the ordinance of town council for approval and provide quarterly updates. The key here, and I'll hand it over to Kathy in a second, is all of our streets and sidewalks guidelines, we have not been strictly adhering to them. The sidewalks in front of all homeowners are their own responsibility, not just this time of year to shovel the snow or to rake the leaves when the leaves fall, but the repair is also the responsibility of the homeowner. That is part of chapter 169 there. So Kathy, comments on that?
Yeah, it just, again, throughout the last 20 years, that with different times in history when the economy has been tight and different things, the town hasn't done a very good job of maintaining their own sidewalks because of times that the budget was really tight and we, at that point of time, we didn't really push homeowners to be fixing their sidewalks. And I think what has happened throughout history is that we, we need to look at that and start over. In the past, we used to have a sidewalk inspection program and now I'm, I'm talking like 20 years ago. We'd inspect sidewalks on a regular basis and then the, we'd send letters to the homeowners and people would make, fix their sidewalks and do various things. One, it's a huge undertaking of the town staff to inspect sidewalks. We have a lot of sidewalks every year. Now we do that if there's really a very, very troubled sidewalk, we will talk to the homeowner and fix it. We've also been applying for state grants and various grants to fix our main streets, one in Unionville now in the main street sidewalk, so we've been repairing those sidewalks. But I think if, and I'm sure maybe some of you have heard it, we get a lot of questions and comments about sidewalks. People have very strong opinions on it. They want more sidewalks in town, then they don't want to maintain the sidewalks in town. There's a lot that goes with it and so I think we really should look at this and do a deep dive into this ordinance and see what we need to do with our sidewalks and do we need to change some of the policy direction and, but it's, it's very complicated. It's not, it's not an easy topic.
Thoughts?
I think Keith had his hand up.
I just, 20 years ago when that committee was there, was there, do we find that we got a lot of compliance or was there sort of just a lot of extra work, you know, when we had a committee out speaking with homeowners and things like that?
It's, it wasn't a real popular program. Let's put it that way. It wasn't a real popular program and it's, it's so, and it's, it's hard because like what is the standard that really your sidewalk then needs to be fixed versus, you know, is it an A, is it a B, is it a C? And, you know, the town has a lot of rights. We can lean the property, we can do a lot of different things and we wouldn't want to do that. And then we tried at one point that we'd have the contractor, you know, the town would put, put the contractor and then all the homeowners could use that one contractor and then do, and that was a little bit more well received, but again, it's, it's a difficult program to run. It's, it's, and it's, and I think it's, you know, there's benefits to it and people with their sidewalks, but, you know, even just getting, we have some people with compliance of getting the snow off the sidewalks, you know, not everyone follows that. And so it wasn't that popular, but I think that, again, I think it has to be looked at overall.
Yeah, my concern would just be the, because it does sound like a big job and then how much do you actually get out of that? Like how many homeowners are actually following up? And then how much work is it to follow up and how much sidewalk are we getting done for the amount of work?
Right. It's, and then again, and then you have to, you know, are you leaning, are you actually leaning people's property and that type of thing? But that said, there's some sidewalks that really are not in very good shape and people have walked on them. And that's why some of the main streets in Unionville Center and the town, the grant prospect is that we are doing it. But the other equation is, is that to put a new sidewalk in according to our ordinance, you have to have a public hearing, the owners have to agree to it, and this is according to our own ordinance, and you have to have a certain amount of people. And a lot of people, if they don't have a sidewalk in front of their house, they don't typically want a sidewalk in front of their house where other people in the neighborhood, like down the street, maybe do want the sidewalk there. And they have all the liability. So we do get a lot of requests, more so now, of installing new sidewalks and, you know, from, in different parts of the neighborhood. And like, we've talked about like broad 10,000 feet, that should we have something that you have sidewalks that lead to the trails, you know, and so, but, you know, get people to the trail system. And, but then again, who's maintaining those sidewalks and who's, are we having public hearings or is the town going to take that on? So again, you know, there's, it's, there's a lot to this.
Just a question and a comment. Question, I've always understood that the maintenance of shoveling the snow and making sure there's nothing in the way has been the owner's responsibility, but the actual replacement of the sidewalks, a little bit news to me, I guess I'm naive in this subject, but are those sidewalks that are within the town right of way or are they physically placed on the property that, that a homeowner would be required to replace or repair, et cetera?
It's the, it's the homeowner's responsibility.
Understood.
I need to replace it, yeah.
And, and, but those, they exist within the town right of way?
Let me just get, I think Russ is still on.
Yeah. Yes.
That's very interesting.
Yes, yes. Yes, Johnny. Those sidewalks are, current ordinance, if you have a sidewalk in front of your house, it's within the town right of way, you as the property owner that it crosses are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep. And as Kathy said years ago, we would go out and we had, we would write people letters and it just gets really ugly. And then you get, you know, people, you know, a lot of people don't have a lot of extra money to make these repairs and you get into a whole nother, you know, a lot of staff time back and forth to get, make sure that there's not tripping hazards and inspection time and to get people to comply is really difficult. And then at what, how much of a stomach is the council going to have, are we going to, you know, pushed, all right, we're going to fix it and then we'll lean the property? Is that something that we, we just typically don't do that here in Farmington?
So I can only imagine, Russ. And then my comment is, I do believe that this ad hoc committee needs to be put together to look at this holistically because even in my own development experience, a lot of towns are requiring sidewalks. We ask for waivers, they, we, a lot of times don't get that. But there are situations where there's high foot traffic and then there's situations where you're on local roads with limited foot traffic and on those local roads, people choose to walk side by side, walk in their dogs, they choose to walk on the roadways. So pretty much every situation I've been in the last 15, 20 years, we build them, we put them there, and then the first thing we do is we pile all the snow on it and don't even touch them because during the winter, nobody wants to pay the, the maintenance costs of shoveling it, especially when associations and stuff are, are there. So I, I would, you know, be behind this.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, and your point is well taken about not even knowing. I think one of the council people asked me a question about it today is that, about doing an education that homeowners are actually responsible for it. And I think most do know that they're responsible for the snowing, taking the snow, but they, I don't think they realize that they're responsible, just like you, that actually to fix it.
I have a lot of sidewalk on my yard. The town currently snow blows it, snow blows it for me because they get out at midnight when I'm not there, but yes, so.
And just
All right, well, thank you.
As far as the responsibility, I'm fairly certain it is within the deed of every homeowner somewhere. It says for anyone who wants to read all the fine print on the deed, that it is your responsibility. Rafina, you have a question?
So Johnny actually asked and got my question answered. And I do agree that most people don't understand that once you have a sidewalk there, that the town puts in, because I live in a very small development, I now know that, but that you're responsible. So if we're talking about like walkability in, in town, in the town of Farmington, and I've always wondered why like West Hartford, everybody's got a sidewalk, but we don't do it generally because of the cost that it, it entails, right? Do we put it in just as a matter of course? Like, for example, if there was like a new development, would Farmington say, okay, we'll put the sidewalks in, but then after that, it's ceded to the development or to the homeowner?
I think that's typically what we do now, that most of the developments, Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, most of the developments now
The developer puts it in.
The developer puts it in.
It's required with TPZ, they're required that the developer put in the sidewalks and we do that in, I believe most, Johnny might be able to answer this better than Russ, I believe we do that in just about all new developments.
It's part of the subdivision regs and it's required just like a town road width, a spec, et cetera. And then the developer can ask for a waiver, but this planning and zoning commission over the last, I would say 20 years has been, not, not, not to, you know, basically not very many ones have been accepted, I'll put it that way.
So then if a bunch of homeowners that already have an existing property without, you know, like a whatever group of homes, without a sidewalk and then they just get together and say, hey, town of Farmington, could we have a sidewalk? And then do we do, then do we say, yes, you can?
Yeah, there's a whole process. There's a whole process that they
So that's new to me. I didn't realize that that was an option.
It's, it's a whole process with the ordinance and you have public hearings and then who pays for it? They pay for it and you put it down and, but, like I think Kat, if you have it there, I think that the ordinance, how many, I think putting a new sidewalk in, what does it say for that? I pulled out the ordinance today.
It's a very long procedure. You, there's a lot that goes back and forth with the town manager's office, filing the map, recording it in the town clerk's office, having a public hearing. It depends where. After the public hearing, the town manager has determined the extent of the sidewalk improvement and the amount of special assessments to be made. So basically the town can say, we're going to cover it or it's actually going to go to the, the property owners on that. Compile the costs.
Yeah, I think we do it as an assessment.
Yes, we do.
The only thing I was looking for, I don't know if there's like a majority that has to agree, but you have to have a public hearing on it and then you get the cost, the overall cost, and then the town would put it in and then we'd assess the property for, and you could either, we haven't done one in a really long time, but you'd pay maybe over 10 years to pay for the sidewalk or five years or whatever it would be.
So the homeowner would be paying for the sidewalk?
The homeowner, yeah, the homeowner would be. But the problem is, is that even in neighborhoods, many, many times, you don't have full agreement with the whole neighborhood to put it in. And then you have a public hearing and then it, it sometimes can be nasty because you have neighbors kind of fighting against neighbors about it. And so it's, again, people have different opinions, but there is a process of how to do it.
So anytime a sidewalk is going anywhere it has not been before, we have to go through that process?
Right. And I kind of see this and Russ and I have talked about it and I'm not sure if any of the council, but many years ago, we looked at our sewer ordinance and about some of the different things in our sewer ordinance about who pays for pump stations, who, when you upgrade the sewer treatment plant. And we did a huge study and we had a committee and I think it took a couple of years, but we did it before we did the upgrade. And it, it was so well worth the work that we did because we got all these things codified and we are following rules and it's like everyone understands it. I envision that this needs that kind of a study. It really needs to be looked at, all the different avenues, what other towns do, what we want to do. So like I said, it's, it's, to me, it's, it's overdue. It's just that the workload on it and the complexity is very high.
Other question? So Kathy, with this particular goal, which I see a lot of red on here, it's complex, it takes a lot of staff time, takes a lot of town council time. Something like this, I think we'd have to have serious discussions and prioritize and that's something we'll do after we go through all these.
Yeah.
So this is certainly, it seems like something we're all interested in, following up and talking about, but let's, so let's put a big mark next to this one because this will be one of those large items that we say, okay, if we're doing this large item, which other large item can't we do? So, okay. Number five.
That's just the complete sidewalk project, yep.
Questions on that one? Okay.
Yeah, one question. Is that just the phase one component?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll put, I'll make a note of that, Brian.
Yep.
Just don't want anyone to think the whole thing's going in.
Yep, I'll make a note.
Next item goes down to 2.7, item six, am I right or am I missing?
Yep, six, cross out and new six.
Okay, the new six, provide needed support to ensure the Farmington High School Building Committee moves forward and receives the appropriate staffing support and complete objectives. This is another red all across the board. I don't think there's any doubt we're going to continue on this. So this is just following through and making sure we're doing everything we need to do to keep that project moving forward and where it needs to be.
Yeah, and again, I, I know I don't need really to say it, but Johnny being part of the building committee and things that go along with it, you know, the implementation of getting the building built is a huge undertaking. And it's now, even though between Kat and my office, Ellen, it's been kind of just those guys with the support, but now it's kind of moved into more of a lot of the town function. There's buildings, there's Russ Arnold, there's different things, even though we pay for owner's reps, it's really kind of moving, it's still on the school side with all the design and that, but then when it's actually being built, that again, being good stewards and following things, it's moving more onto the town side of the equation. So I just, it's, it's a really big undertaking.
Have you left? It's been, well, and this project has been a tremendous time piece for your staff in general for the last
Yeah.
Two years now. So, okay, good. Goal seven, provide needed support to ensure that the Farmington Fire Station Building Committee moves forward and receives the appropriate staffing support to complete the objectives, provide quarterly reports. Well, in our February meeting, we'll be creating that committee, so we haven't quite created it yet, but any questions on Fire Station Building Committee in general? This is reviewing all the buildings. Kathy, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, it's, again, it's, it's not hugely complex, but it is a building committee. You know, we have in the budget of, you know, I think, what's, Joe, do you remember what the number is? It's seven or eight million dollars? It's a ra- rather large project.
Fire station?
What was that? Yeah, I think it's seven or eight million.
It's supposed to be 11.
11, okay. 11 million dollars, you know, and, you know, renovations and different things that go along with it. It's not necessarily an easy project.
Okay.
I'm supposed to give Joe this for when he talks?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
You'll have to turn it off.
Next time, will you?
Yeah.
Item eight, provide needed support to ensure that the 1928 ad hoc committee moves forward and receives the appropriate staff and support and clear objectives, provide
You'll have to turn it off.
Next time, will you?
Yeah.
Item eight, provide needed support to ensure that the nineteen twenty-eight ad hoc committee moves forward and receives the appropriate staff and support and objectives, provide quarterly reports to the town council. Any questions on that one? Discuss that a little bit earlier. Okay. Number nine, under two point eight, provide the need support to ensure that the land acquisition committee moves forward and receives the appropriate staffing, completes the objectives, provide quarterly reports to the town council. Not the heavy lift there, that's more on the council activities and the town staff.
And then number six, about moving to the town planner's goals, just so.
Oh, okay, yes. The previous goal, working with the Farmington Cemetery Committee. And for those of you who haven't been sitting through some of the cemetery discussions, the Farmington Cemetery right now is reaching capacity very quickly. I believe it's by statute, they need to find more space. Every town is supposed to have a town cemetery, so we need to find more land to do that. We have found a few different properties that have not worked out, and we're continuing to do that. But at this point, our town manager feels the town planner would be best suited to handle that. I think you were saying the town planner staff is more staff than it had been in the past, so they can handle that?
I hope so. I think there's some different things about looking at, with the state of Connecticut and doing some legwork. And I think at this level, we could bring it to the town planner, and then, you know, she would, again, be bringing it to me. And if we need to get some council involvement, we would do that.
Okay. So if we get a targeted piece of property, it'll be coming to the council anyway?
Yeah.
So, okay. Great. Okay, economic development. Another one moving to economic development. On this one, provide needed support to ensure that the town council Yukon Subcommittee moves forward and receives the appropriate staffing, support, completed objectives. Yeah, that's, we discussed this, this seems like it's perfect for the economic development to be handling this. Number ten, to create the town council ad hoc committee with town staff to explore various quality of life features that enhance a sense of place for millennials, report quarterly to the town council on any recommendations, including long term and short term. And that was one we had previously, we sort of tabled it with COVID and all that was going on?
Yes.
Thoughts on that one, Kathy?
Again, it's, I think it's, it's a good goal. Again, I'm not sure if I would keep it potentially in economic development. Maybe I was talking to Nancy Parent, potentially that maybe between her and having it with some, with recreation and some different things like that. One of the things that Nancy was talking to me about is that, when we were talking about the goal today, is that kind of seeing what we offer now, and, you know, again, that's what this ad hoc committee would do, is kind of vet a lot of different things. I think economic development would be involved in it, but I'm not sure maybe if Nancy, if it was something potentially after the skateboard was done, that maybe her and some of her staff could take that on, for the goal, and then Rose could be as needed. But.
Okay, thoughts on that one? Brian?
Yeah, there, I added this a couple of years ago, or I suggested that we add it, because I had talked to a number of younger people in town who were interested in getting involved and bringing some activities to the town, but wanted to work with the town to see what was the best way to do it. And they were, they're still eager to offer suggestions, you know. And one of them is interested in, in doing a program at the new high school that would be broader and income and economic development for the town. So they thought there were some good ideas, and they wanted to work with us to make those things happen.
Brian, when you're saying activities, are you talking, because you said economic development also?
Yeah.
Would it be more activities that fall under the rec department type activities, or be?
Not exactly. There were some that were, they wanted to do some, you know, frisbee golf and things. So that would certainly be rec department. I think we're bringing events to the town.
Okay.
Which would be more economic development.
Yep. Other thoughts on number ten?
When I, when I was reading this, I, before Kathy even spoke on it, I was, I thought it was more an economic development and recreation issue. When I was reading it, actually, I put a note that I just needed clarification because I didn't know if this was, you know, planning and zoning, they just added, had an approval for a large building by Pratling Pond, which was supposed to sort of attract younger homeowners to the area. So I didn't know if it was, we were looking for places to live for young adults, or it sounds more like activities for younger adults. And to me, I think that all falls under recreation, economic development.
Yeah. I think one of the things, again, again, it's the ad hoc committee, we weren't really a hundred percent sure what, everyone had like a lot of different ideas, and that's what this committee would do, is kind of vet some of the different things. Like, one of the things I was talking about with Rose and some different things, like, like, almost like a communication of like, what's being offered that maybe younger people would have an interest in that are going on, like a section on the Explore Farmington, that maybe people like the trivia night, or they like a comedian that's coming to one of the restaurants, or something along those lines, that, you know, communicating that out a little bit more, or something along those lines. Nancy was saying to me, and recreation, you know, we do not, and typically, I don't think towns do, we don't program for, not, I'm sorry, other towns do, but we don't program for adults. So we don't have any real recreation programs. We don't program for adults. And again, whether it's frisbee golf or some kind of thing that's more for the adults. And, you know, we've kind of cut back on some of it with the recreation because the school, between continuing ed, they do some programming more for the adults, but not on maybe the recreation side of it. So, again, there was, this was the ad hoc committee, the thoughts are, is getting a group together to talk about all these various things that are going on. And with the fact that, you know, there is some of these housing complexes that are coming in, that are looking to bring in, you know, I think the thought is, is, you know, maybe younger people, but one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and where these people would be interested in staying in Farmington, what they do in the evenings or on the weekends and things like that.
And businesses have been saying they're looking for activities for young, to draw young people in.
Yeah.
So that's a big component. That would certainly be an economic driver.
Yeah.
So creating an ad hoc committee here, we'd be potentially having an ad hoc committee with Nancy and Rose, is that what you're thinking? And then decide
Yeah.
who is best to woo the millennials?
Yeah. Yes. I mean, I think all of these goals are really great goals. I think when we go through them all, I think that, you know, I think we need to talk about priorities and about what we actually can accomplish over two years.
Yep. Okay. All right. That's good to clarify that. And that, as we're going through, because we're going to go through all this, and then we're going to discuss the time. And keep in mind, if you're rallying behind having an ad hoc committee, your name will be at the top of the list to be on that town ad hoc committee. Okay. Moving on.
Number eleven.
Number eleven. Actively participates in regional state, that's something that we're currently doing and have been doing?
Yes.
Don't plan on changing that?
No. And that's one of Rose's priorities, is that she does spend a considerable amount of time being out there and seeing what's going on. And she does a wonderful job for us for that.
Right. Number twelve is going to the Bicycle Committee. That's the Partnership of Trails Council, and that's the idea of expanding the name of the Bicycle Advisory Committee to something else.
Yep.
Okay. Number thirteen, Economic Development Director. This is, again, the Explore Farmington. She's done a great job of taking advantage of Explore Farmington to not only draw people in throughout the pandemic, but to help the businesses, to help people understand which businesses are open and all that. So I think that's great. That makes sense. Okay, under four, Budget. Can we skip twelve?
Yeah.
Just kidding. Prepare and present the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual budget. So this is something we do every year, so we'll continue to do that. Thirteen, okay, is a completed one. The new thirteen is provide needed support to ensure the ARP ad hoc committee moves forward and receives the appropriate staffing. This is a fairly critical one because this is time sensitive, and there is money coming in we need to deal with. Number fourteen is another completed one. Tax relief, we did a great job on that, I thought, last year, and increased that. The new fourteen, continue to meet with Farmington delegation on a yearly basis. We bring them in every year and let them know what's important to Farmington, and hear how they've been helping us out over the course of the past year. So we'll do that again. That will be in February. Under number five, item fifteen, manage and monitor all town departments, something that is always occurring and will continue to occur. Sixteen, yearly report on the town manager's goals and objectives. Seventeen, the old seventeen is a completed one. New seventeen, manage and monitor all COVID nineteen related issues, provide quarterly reports to the town council, an item we're adding that two years ago, we didn't know existed because it didn't exist. So this has been, if you look at the coloring down there, huge in the complication and the staff time involved. Again, it's been rewriting the book on how to run a town. And, you know, compliments to the staff because they've done a tremendous job on that the past few years. We just have to now put it in our goals and objectives.
Yeah. And if I could just kind of speak to this a little bit, because really, over the last thirty days, again, the whole COVID-related municipal issues has really ticked up. And I think that, the council, I'm sure you're aware, is that when something comes out and there's a change, it's really all hands on deck, and everything really gets dropped to manage a lot of the COVID issues. And, you know, after the last thirty days, we were distributing masks, we were distributing kits, our employees, you know, were down, things have loosened up a little bit, but we're probably down twenty-five percent of our staffing right now with people, whether, you know, doing close contacts, making sure that we are providing our services, you know, with snow plowing and with the police and with the fire. So, and then the other thing that we're learning now, too, is that with that comes, your day-to-day operations have been changing. And I'll give an example of Kat, and who manages a lot of our personnel. So a lot of the personnel, again, with the COVID, is, you know, contact tracing, can someone be in work, not be in work, what goes along with that, that type of, you know, on the calling people and getting that straightened out. But the other part of it is, is that there's, there's personnel issues that come along with it. And there's various things about vaccines, and what we're doing, and who's doing what, and the union, and, again, the day-to-day of what, it's different. It's different, it's a whole different aspect of personnel that we have to, have to deal with, which we never had to deal with before. And Nancy Parent, for instance, in social services, there's a lot more mental health. There's a lot of different things that the day, her day-to-day work is different now because of COVID. And, again, with the dial a ride, and with the senior center, and how much, how much we're providing the service and what we're doing, it's all really, it's changed quite a bit. And our service level is a little bit different, and we also are working in a system where a lot of people are still not working, they're working from, they're working, they're not working in their offices, they're working from home. It's, it's a whole different environment. And unfortunately, when it hits, it really, it's, it's all hands on deck. And I guess, over the Christmas holiday, and what's happened is that, and it's like this in the school system, is that our municipal employees, our police, our fire, our human resource people, we're, everyone is really kind of at the end. And I think that we should be aware of that. It's, it's really been a long time of trying to really keep up the service level, and especially now with a lot less with the employees. And so I just want the council to be aware of that. I know some of you are, but it is, it is, it's, it's become, it's tough. It's very tough. It's tough on the employees, it's tough on the staff, and it's, it takes a lot of time, a lot of time.
Understood. And that's, you know, clearly, I think everyone who's watching this and all of us up here have been going through similar situations in our own lives. It's, it's been far too long, and certainly far longer than any of us expected we'd be going through, something we had never experienced before. The, the challenge on the town side, as Kathy was bringing up, you have something that changes, and you have to respond instantly. The test kits and the masks, the distribution was just one example of, from one day to the next, we're told you have to set up an entire system that you've never had before to create distribution to the town people who need these, and make it run efficiently, and try and get these out as quickly and as orderly as you can. And, again, I think the town staff did a tremendous job with that. But you're also faced with things that we all face in our daily life also right now. You're going to have reductions in staff because people are getting sick. And unfortunately, in any one building, it's not usually just one person who gets sick, and with contact tracing, you're going to have multiple people that may be out at a time, and you have to deal with staff shortages that you never would have had to deal with before. So all those have a tremendous effect. And throughout, really, maybe I'm biased, but I'm listening to other people's comments as well, the town has done a tremendous job of keeping the service levels still where people had expected. But, you know, we just have to share with everyone else that we speak to and everyone who's watching or listening, just remember, as you would like someone to have patience with you when you're going through a little difficult time, you know, try and have a little patience and be understanding, it's not normal times. So if things are taking a little bit longer than they had before, be understanding. But that's, I think, really the reason we'd like to get the reports, and so we can hear as the council, and we can relay back to our constituents, what, what the town's been going through, what the challenges are, and how we're meeting the challenges, and, you know, trying to look ahead to get to better days.
Just to jump on that also, CJ? I don't know, like, people probably don't, not even aware of the hundreds and hundreds of phone calls that staff had to take in order to go through prioritizing who's getting what system or test kit, how many masks you're allowed, come at twelve, they show up at eight, how do you stop that? So it is a lot of hurry up and go, hurry up and go, and get something done. And to that point I'm making, do we look at bringing in maybe temporary help in order to bring staff up a little bit, to alleviate some of that pressure that's on our current employees in order to facilitate a better movement?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that, Joe. We have brought in a couple of people to help at the reception desk, and for some of the phone calls, just temporary people, just to do, help us with some of the phone calls, and some of the different things, running out to the cars, to bring the masks out, and doing some of that. You know, and, and again, it's a, it's a employee market right now. There's, you know, one of the things is, is that, you know, we are, recruitment is very difficult, not just for us, but a lot of different places. It's just, even, we have vacancies that it's tough to fill, you know. And, you know, our, unfortunately, our building inspector just had a real, not a COVID issue, but a really serious issue. So our building inspector's out for, you know, weeks and weeks and weeks. It's our only building inspector. You know, he's, he's not around. Our fire director took another position, and so the police department is handling the fire department, which is working out well, but the police department's also helping out a lot with the school system. And so everyone's, you know, doing what they need to do, and I appreciate it. But I just, when I look at some of these goals and what it's, what's on this plan, I get, I get nervous about it because I, I want to be able to be successful with the council to accomplish this. But there's a lot of heavy lifts on this, on this goals and objectives. And we run a really very tight employment, where we don't have a lot of employees to start with. So when you're down twenty, twenty-five percent of your employees, and you worry about getting the payroll out because three employees are out for payroll, and people are coming in on, on Saturdays, you know, to get the payroll out, and then we're worried when you have nine paid fire people, and three fire people are out with COVID, and you're trying to get the volunteers, and the snow is coming, and you have twenty percent of your snowplow people out. There's a lot of stuff. There's a lot of stuff.
No, I understand. Like I said, I wanted to bring it to the point. I've been a part of nothing like this, obviously, in my career, but obviously, you know, long-term storms, this and that, I understand. Working sixteen hours, twelve hours, that's a toll. You're not getting proper rest. You're making your system, system more susceptible to getting sick. So it's frustrating and hard on us. So appreciate all you're doing.
And that will be our next steps, just going through, after we get through the whole list on prioritizing. Brian?
I just want to add something and echo what everyone has said here. Kathy, I want you to know just how proud I am as a town council member and as a community member of how you and this town has responded. And being in healthcare, I understand what it takes to keep a collective community healthy, safe, and keep it operating while you've, while you're suffering from people being out. I understand what that's like. And I have to say, what you're doing is admirable. I respect that, and I'm grateful for everything you've done, and what this town has done, and how we've responded to the health and the needs of this community. And I say thank you for that, sincerely.
COVID.
Moving on from COVID. Moving on from COVID. All right. Five-two, town council technical information policy recommendations legislative advice for town council meetings, that's mandatory. Goal nineteen, ensure that the racial equality task force moves forward with the goals of the town's action plan. They receive the appropriate staff and support to complete its objectives. That's pretty cut and dry. I think we've been doing that, we'll continue to do that certainly. Goal number twenty, ensure that the green efforts committee moves forward to receive the appropriate staff support to complete its objectives prior quarterly reports to the town council. Anything you want to add on that one, Kathy?
No, I, I think that, again, that what we've been trying with the green efforts committee is that to set up specific goals that are achievable for the committee and then, you know, just work towards that. And the green efforts committee, they're a committee with, like some of our others, that they do a lot of the legwork themselves and so that helps with the staffing. But what we've been talking with Shannon about is that really setting up very specific goals so then they're making accomplishments and we know what we can actually, what's attainable and what we can achieve.
Good. Question? Rafine?
I don't have any comments about number twenty. I was just hoping that we could add something to five point nine-one when we talk about continually striving to improve communication and transparency.
Sure, wait, before you go on, is there any other, any questions on twenty? Okay, go ahead, Rafine.
Okay. So, you know, we've all sort of talked about it, like how people get their information about the town. So for example, as you can see, you know, it's really crowded here with Joe in the audience, that's the only person. And this is like the plan for our town for the next two years, things that we hope to accomplish. And I feel like if there were maybe, and maybe I'm just being naive, if there were more modes of communication with folks, that they would be like, maybe five people instead of Joe sitting in the audience who are concerned. Because, you know, people don't put, give their input until sometimes it's too late. There has to be multiple ways of getting people engaged. So one of the things that I, that I thought about when we're talking about the economic development website, that, I get that and I've been getting it for the last couple of months, there aren't too many people in town who know about it. They don't, there's a newsletter that comes into your mailbox and it has like a list of hip and happening stuff in town. I wonder if there's a way that we can maybe expand that to include like a little tab on the website about town council happenings or, you know, come to the next meeting, we're talking about strategic plan. Did you know that your sidewalks are your responsibility? Do you want some sidewalks? There's a process for getting that and having links in there so people could then get directed to the town website and get that other piece of information. And, you know, most of us, some of us get our information online exclusively, but maybe there are other ways that we can do it, like, you know, before when we were doing the building committee stuff, we had a little flyer at Highland Park Market. But there has to be, I think, a number of different ways to reach our citizens. So I'm just advocating for including something here for the next two years so we can work on that.
Kathy, any thoughts or Rafine, any thoughts on what you think that would look like?
So, one, we could start with the economic development website and having a tab, I don't know what the, you know, practical matter of going about that is, like, do we talk to Rose? Is there like another, like, how do we get residents to opt in? Do we have people's email addresses, actually, like town residents?
Only if they've given them to us.
Okay. Or maybe we just start small scale, like there, how many of us here on this case?
Seven.
Yeah, just saying, like our own networks and saying, here we go, here's this thing, can you opt in? Can you invite your friends? And maybe it becomes like a, or it starts off as a grassroots effort and more people can opt in to this other way of communicating with the town.
Just to jump in, I'm not sure, but I believe Explorer Farmington must have a tab for town stuff, so I know the racial equality task force has a tab somewhere to go on to, to go on to their stuff. And then it opens up and everything else, so there must be certain tabs, especially if you go to Town of Farmington website, then all your tabs do open up there, too, as far as town council, board of ed, TPZ and stuff like that. So maybe just a link to the Town of Farmington website and then they can scroll down into there.
Yeah, or having like a calendar. So for example, I know that we have like just a calendar, it's like every single meeting. I don't think people understand unless you're paying attention and like have an interest in specific things, how much this town does and all the things that we, as a committee, take care of. And just like little, little things like sidewalks or, you know, the bike paths.
I know they have a calendar, too, because I see all the time posts on Facebook for your weekly.
Well, I believe Rose is actually on the line right now.
Yep, I'll let, I'll put, I'll put Rose on in a second, but again, Rafine, this is like the never-ending struggle with municipalities of trying to communicate out and, you know, no matter how hard we try, I think that people aren't interested until they're interested. And, you know, I want to let Rose talk about, because we've, I think we've, in the last probably three or four years, I think we've gone from like here to here. And we can always strive to even go further, but really, in what we've done and what Rose has done with the Explorer Farmington, we have a part-time communication specialist that has really helped us and helped Rose and we've gotten out there a lot more. Again, I'm open to doing it, it's just, again, it's a staffing level thing of getting more and more, how to get it out there and do that. But I'll go to, go to Johnny and then we'll go to Rose.
Johnny? Just a couple of quick comments. You know, obviously over the last few years, I've seen it through the building committee, I've seen it through associations, and you mentioned one key word that I thought was interesting, but grassroots. Every time we've tried to do something grassroots and we put it on staff to do it, it's not technically grassroots. So it's more on the citizens of this town that are very interested in pushing and, and getting people to do it, because it doesn't matter how many emails or newsletters or how many posts that staff may do, if it's not coming from your neighbor or from other people in the community looking at the same thing, you're just not seeing it. That's the social media websites. And these are things I don't think staff's going to get into. So I just, I, I want to say that there are some struggles with just putting directives on staff when it's not, when grassroots is really the only answer to get this stuff out there. Because I would agree that the website is extremely thorough. I go on a lot of town websites, ours is very easy to navigate, the information's all there. And I would say that even from the start of this, you know, even from the building committee side, you know, the, everything is on Zoom now. So even though they're not in the crowd, there's, you know, there may be some on, I don't know what's on Zoom today, this is a, a meeting that we put together a week ago. But that being said, even in the building committee, we would have twelve, fifteen people listening in where they typically wouldn't. We're recording meetings that can go back and go see later. I do think the town has made some really good headway as far as, you know, being transparent, allowing people to access stuff. Even my own wife cannot make any of the board of ed meetings, but she listens to them at work the next day, you know, on the side while doing her work and stuff like that. So I think the town has done a great job on that. So I, I'm not sure what else would, we could add that, that would, you know, be sufficient.
Well, Rose, why don't you, Rose, you're on here, right?
Yes, yep.
Hi, Rose.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, hi, everyone. Well, Rafine, I, I think you're a hundred percent correct in, in talking about, there's never enough communications that we can do because there's so many different ways that, that different people get their communication. And I think that that's why we, we ended up doing that Explorer Farmington initiative because we realized something that's really missing in this community is a local newspaper. And, and so without that local newspaper that's dedicated just for Farmington news, we have tried to do other things. And, and so, just so you know, like for the town meetings, we go on social media every Monday and post all the different town meetings, again, hoping to get more and more community members to attend these different meetings. The town newsletter used to be, I believe, once a year, it's now four times a year. And that's a paper newsletter that gets mailed to everyone. We do daily social media posts, weekly emails, and then we send up in, so if anybody wants to opt in and be on an email list, we have a little button on most of the emails. It's funny because lately, when we do the emails about, you know, where to get your COVID test or when we were doing stormy Saeas, it's so funny because I think what Johnny just said really, I think, is the most effective. It's neighbors talking to neighbors and really that grassroots. I received two or three or four different emails of people saying, my friend told me she gets an email from you about the COVID test, can you add my name to it? So I think you're right. If all of you on your own social media pages put a link and said, hey, do you guys know about Explorer Farmington? And then tag our Facebook page and our Instagram, that would go a long way because then all of your friends on your social media accounts would, would then get exposed to what we're doing. But we're always open to suggestions. We have done an enormous amount of growth. I think we have now over a thousand people following us while the four, we started off small, like, we used to have like twenty-five people, so we have done an enormous amount of growth, but there is still more, you know, that can be done.
Yeah, and one of the things, I think, is, Rose, one of the reasons that why we started Explorer Farmington is because a lot of people found the town website to be very dry and it's really about, you know, meetings and some different things. And so we tried to then have Explorer Farmington where people had interest about certain things and then link to some of the meetings or link to some of the topics. So instead of the opposite, because people seemed to enjoy what restaurants were around or what's this or what's that. And then we kind of tried to link, you know, with different things. But I'm always open to try to do better with this because it's a never-ending struggle to try to get people interested in it and to do different things. So I could try to come up with some verbiage to add to this to, or if you want to send me something, I'd be more than happy.
I'd be happy to send you something.
Okay.
Great. Okay, any other thoughts on twenty A? We'll call it for the moment. Okay, and that's, I think, you know, we'll talk about it when we get some wording and see, is it better to be a council goal, an economic development goal, is it, and where, where we could get the most bang for the buck on this? Okay. Great, moving on. Previous twenty-one was completed. New twenty-one is to oversee and completion of renewal or renovate, excuse me, skateboard park that tugs his meat. So Kathy, what's, where are we right now in that process?
Where we are is that a design is being put together right now. The committee's been working on it and we're hoping to start doing something, I think, in the season, in the spring and summer.
Okay. And I see green under TC, so I love this one. Okay. Twenty-two is completed. And that gets us through the entire list.
Yes.
Now, what I'd like to do is, we've gone through it all, you all can take a look at all the items that are not the critical ones that will be acting on regardless. There are certain things that we went through that will be on that list. Try and set a priority list of each of your own. I think at the next meeting, we'll come back with our priority list, see what is actually achievable. We always like to have goals that we can achieve over the course of the two years and the timeframes for them, which ones are the most critical, which ones are the least critical, so we can have that discussion. Kathy, if you could look through them, is there anything you want to add to those when we come back or anything we should consider in particular when we're making those decisions?
No, but the only thing, and I don't think we were as clear as we could have been last time around, is that I think these are two-year goals and sometimes we could make them like, you know, second tier, you know, for the next year.
Yep.
So just keep that in mind, too.
Good. And that is, of course, everything changed as soon as we got our goals set last time, so a little different. But yeah, just keep that in mind and go through that list between now and next week and see where you'd like to be and what are the most important ones on that list for you. And then Kathy will help us out with which ones are truly achievable simultaneously because some of those, you saw a lot of red in there. There's no way all of those can get priority one. So we've got to figure out which are the most important goals. The only other thing I'd like to talk about today is just kind of go over budget targets and the process there. I'm not, we're not going to set one tonight, but I think we'll get a little bit of the background on it. Kathy had a nice write-up in here. Do you just want to, actually, we've got to go through our motions here.
So I think you made a motion, you seconded, and Maureen, I know that you're new, but I think that we just table that.
Yes. We've got a motion on the table, seconded, we're going to table that motion until our January twenty-fifth meeting.
So I'll make the motion?
Need a second?
Didn't make the motion yet.
Oh, I thought it was the motion.
You made the motion for this list.
For the strategic plan, yes.
Strategic plan, yes. So we're going to table the strategic plan and now you're going to make your next motion. Right?
Yeah, so you made the motion to table, Keith, you seconded it, we're tabling it.
Okay.
All right, then the next one.
All right, so we're going on to item D-three?
Yes.
All right, make a motion to consider and take action on the budget targets for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Kathy?
This is the typical information that I usually give the town council. It's our adopted budget history, our five-year expenditure averages, our tax rate history. As you know, it's, it's kind of a wacky system because we don't have a lot of information available, but we're doing the budget at this time. So if, if the council chooses to make targets, we need them as, you know, sooner rather than later because we are working on the budget. I do like to just mention some of the things that are drivers on the budget. One is that as of when we wrote this agenda, the cost of living is six point eight percent. Our, two of our collective bargaining contracts have not been settled and that's going to be the, oh, some of our collective bargains have not been settled. We're going to be going into negotiation with the police and fire next year and we have to settle ASME, but we're getting close to that. Health insurance is obviously always a driver. Our pension contribution is a large item in our budget, so that's a driver. Utilities are, again, are going up based on what we see. And COVID-19, or I'm calling it the supply chain, the cost of goods, I'm putting that with inflation a little bit, it's just that some things, just it's odd, some things are very, very pricey and some things are not. But again, we are seeing some, some of that that is going to be incorporated into the budget.
Okay. Questions, comments on how we're going about this next?
Yeah, kind of going back to what you were saying, Kathy, with the, the supply chain issues and that, you know, that six point eight percent, it's not going to be six point eight percent for every good and service, obviously it's going to vary depending on what we're looking at. Do we have an idea of what we expect for like increase of health insurance and utilities? Do we have?
We're, we're, we're in the process of getting that information. I could kind of take it more to a bigger, a broader level about overall, like what I see kind of in the town.
Sure, sure.
Is that, if you look at our five-year average, is that about two point seven four percent? And that's basically keeping a status quo type of budget, you know, that's our average. Anytime we're adding more services or adding additional employees, that are true additional employees, not just restructuring, that would be raising that number up. And I think that between some of the inflation types of costs, you know, we're looking easy at three percent, I would say, to keep, keep things running at where we are on the expenditure side of things. You know, one of the things that the council has sometimes have done, and not tonight, but with the targets, you've talked about a tax increase, you know, where you look in the tax increase, because sometimes our expenditures can be a little bit higher than what they were because of our revenues and other things that helped the tax rate come down. And I think if you look at like what our expenditures were last year versus what the tax rate was, you can see, because we have such a strong grant list and if we have strong revenues, that sometimes the council targets, you know, what are we looking for, for an overall tax rate?
Thank you. Other questions? I guess just to tag along with Ed's question to a degree, one of the things when we're talking about where we'd like to be, as Kathy said, sometimes we look at what our tax rate change will be, sometimes we discuss where spending needs to be, you know, it's, sometimes we just look at what each line item is. There's a number of ways of looking at this. One of the items that I think we will all be keeping in mind is in light of the high school building project, are those projections going forward? And all of those numbers that we worked on to explain to the public that we could afford a new high school had to do with a maximum tax increase of three percent. So we just need to keep that in mind, I think, throughout our deliberations here. Anything else on this before we move on? I think we'll be, unless anyone wants to throw out numbers today, we can table this also and bring out numbers on the twenty-fifth and get our targets. Nobody wants to throw a teaser number? Okay.
I think I need a little more information. I think I need a little more information.
Reasonable. Joe?
Sir?
Move the table lesson?
Sir, make a motion to table the town manager's budget of 2022, 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table in a second. We're all in agreement to table? Okay, we are tabling this item. And what's next here? Joseph, new business, seeing none, executive session. I believe we have no executive session today.
No executive session.
And in light of the holiday, Martin Luther King's Day holiday yesterday, I will leave you with a quote from the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. "Everybody can be great because greatness is determined by service. You only need a heart full of grace and a soul generated by love." With that, I'll ask for a move to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the 20, I'm sorry, the January 18th, 2022 town council meeting.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.